You've got a green light.
Okay, welcome. I'd like to call this July 9th, 2018 council meeting to order. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first action item we have this evening is an oath of office. We have a new Ward Three Councilman, Eric M. Hefinger. He will be sworn in by his wife, Ashley Hefinger. So if you please go to the front. Mayor, I think we need that mic.
Maybe hold it.
Hold it.
Well, somebody's gonna have to hold it.
You can hold it.
I, Eric M. Hefinger.
I, Eric M. Hefinger.
Being duly sworn.
Being duly sworn.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio.
And will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties delving upon.
Discharging the duties delving upon.
Me as Ward Three Councilperson.
Me as Ward Three Councilperson.
For the City of Medina, Medina County, Ohio.
For the City of Medina, Medina County, Ohio.
Congratulations. Not many people get to witness a new swearing in, but hopefully everybody here had excitement on that one. That was. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Here.
Hefinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Parnell Kaby.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of June 25th, 2018 is prepared and submitted by the clerk. Be approved.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to the council meeting this evening. And we'll meet again on, I think, August 28th is our next meeting. We may have one in between there. Twenty seven.
August 27th.
I'm trying to push it to the 28th. But we have a little break. Council goes on break for six weeks after this meeting. So everybody just made it in time. Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, oh, he's not here, Mr. Simpson. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report, but I do have a number of things in my, on the agenda in my committee. And I'm going to meet with the diversity group sometime later this month. And then we'll try to schedule a special legislation meeting when we come back or very early in September to start to look on, look at the legislation on nondiscrimination.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mrs. Parnell Kaby.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Thank you. And Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report and I'm working on getting a meeting scheduled when we return.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for Finance. We have 18-132, adopt 2018 codification update. 18-133, purchase of two police SUVs from Lebanon Ford. 18-134, expenditure over 15,000 to outfit two police SUVs from Hall Public Safety. 18-135, amendment to wellness service agreement with the MRCRC. 18-136, Eastman at 247 East Smith Road. 18-139, increased PO for crossroads asphalt for the Street Department. And the two items for the Special Legislation Committee is 18-137, the LGBTQ-inclusive nondiscrimination legislation. And 18-138, the prohibited feeding deer and wild animals. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a number of outstanding community events this past week, from July 3rd to July 11th, which was part of our homecoming week. And some of that continues for the next few days. From July 9th to July 12th, the Medina County Arts Council will present a noon children's program each day and music each evening at 7:00 PM. On July 11th, from 11:00 to 2:00, from 11:00 AM to 2:00, I'm sorry. The annual Medina High School 50-plus reunion luncheon will be held at Waymouth Country Club. On July 21st, the All Time County Fair will take place on the square from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. On July 28th, the 9/11 Memorial Dedication will take place at 10:03 AM at Fire Station 1 up by Regal Cinema. On August 4th, the 18-18 Old Town Graveyard, there will be a talk there by the Friends of the Cemetery at 1:00 PM. And that graveyard has a number of the ancestors that fought in the Civil War are buried there. August 12th, Public Square from 11:00 to 2:00. There are going to be presentations on the growth of the city during the 1950s and 1960s. And that will be presented along with the program affair on the square during that same day. August 18th, Medina Library will have a History of Transportation at 1:00 PM. And August 25th, the Medina Fest, which is the former International Festival, will take place from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And it will be a day-long celebration of all things Medina. The community band concerts on Public Square will continue each Friday evening in July. Those start at 8:30 PM. If those are canceled due to weather, then it's on the city website as well as the band website. And we try to send it out on our Facebook pages as well. For further bicentennial information, they have a website with more detail. And that's www.madina200.com. Couple other events. Art in the Park is Sunday, July 15th, from 11:00 to 5:00 on the square. Family Movie Night is Saturday, August 11th, between 8:00 PM and 11:00 PM on Public Square. And that's sponsored by Cool Beans Cafe and Councilwoman Laura Parnell Kaby. And then the affair on the square I mentioned previously, but the actual hours are from 11:00 to 5:00 on August 12th, and that's on Public Square. The agenda shows Dustin Russell, the regional liaison for Governor Kasich, was going to be here to present a governor's proclamation to the city for our bicentennial. He had a conflict and had to cancel. And he's hoping to come back on August 27th. And lastly, the proclamation for the Medina Girls Rugby Team will be presented by me at the same time as ordinance 10118. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The tax budget is on the agenda and I'll address that when we get there.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, City Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Chief Kinney, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item to note, that the City of Medina Economic Development Committee will meet tomorrow, July 10th, at 8:00 AM in the multipurpose room here at Medina City Hall. We have Bethany Dentler and Kathy Brighton-Butcher of Medina County Economic Development Corporation leading a discussion of the future of development for the county. And this is part of their effort to create a comprehensive economic development strategy. So it is open to the public and anybody that would like to provide input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel, Planning Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Chief Painter, Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick updates from the REC. I want to thank Roger Smalley and the Bicentennial Committee for sponsoring the Free Admission Day at the Memorial Pool on July 6th during the Friends of the Medina Memorial Park and Pool Party. Also, a thank you to the councilpersons who volunteered at the pool party on Friday, which included Bill Lamb, Denny Simpson, Laura Parnell Kaby, and our newest Councilman, Eric Hefinger. Thank you all for your time. It turned out to be a fantastic day and a great party all around. Lastly, our next REC Advisory Board will be Thursday, August 16th, at 7:30 AM at the REC Center as our July meeting has been canceled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I have to report is that we recently, as of today, completed the repaving of the entry drive at Fred Greenwood Park, leading to the splash pad. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you. Updated a couple of the projects around town. The 42 reconstruction, last week, the traffic was flipped from the west side of the road to the east side. This is ahead of schedule. Right now, we're still looking at early October, but the project should be coming to a close here. Guilford and East Smith both remain closed. Work on those are both on schedule and they will be open in the next several weeks. Thank you.
Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge our city staff and Service Department for their work in the preparation of the events that you heard the mayor reference earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Notice of Communications Petitions are non-unfounded business. We have none introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed at the Chair and a reasonable time of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered in the minutes. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by our vote of the majority of councilmembers present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is JR Russell and I am the new Domestic Violence Magistrate at the Medina County Domestic Relations Court. My position was created when Judge Kovak received a grant from the Department of Justice for the Office of Violence, Office to Prevent Violence Against Women. I'm here to address council, to inform everyone and to spread the word about changes that were recently made in Ohio law. Effective July 6th, it is now possible to obtain a protection order from dating violence. Before, you could only get a protection order if you demonstrated that there was a family or household relationship, or in the case of a civil stalking order, that there was a pattern of conduct. But there was a hole in the previous law that someone who suffered from dating violence or was in danger of dating violence could not go to the Domestic Relations Court and obtain a protection order. That has now been changed, effective Friday. And as a matter of fact, I had, fortunately or unfortunately, my first one came through today. But I'm making the rounds to spread the word that now this is a gender-neutral law. But statistically speaking, women are disproportionately more likely to face violence at the hands of someone they're dating than men would be. But this is something that's open to both men or women and it's an option that's available. And in fact, the new law mandates that law enforcement who investigate the potential of violence stemming from a dating relationship are required to inform the parties about their ability to potentially obtain a protection order that could go within five years from a Domestic Relations Court. The procedure is the same as a civil protection order. Someone files a petition, they're guaranteed that they will see me or another magistrate that same day to determine whether or not they're entitled to an order. And then both the petitioner and the respondent would have a right to have a full hearing within 14 days. So it's most likely going to increase the caseload for me and the rest of the magistrates at the Domestic Relations Court, but a change that is worthwhile. And if council has any questions, I'm happy to address those now or after the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Russell. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. At this time, I'd ask that Coach Steve Biller and Coach Mike Todd come up front and ask the team to come off.
Congratulations, girls.
Don't trip on it. Whoa, okay. Try to squeeze in if you ever want to take a picture. It might be tough. Maybe somebody can come up here. If you guys want to get a picture. I'll have everybody take the pictures now.
Everybody in scrum. Let's do it.
We don't want to be in there. Everybody good? We're gonna get there. Okay, now we're coming up. We're coming up. Okay. Well, first, congratulations on a great season and a great result. I think becoming a state champion is a great honor. You'll remember this for the rest of your life. It's something that doesn't come around that often, so enjoy it while you have it. That's all I can tell you. But I have a resolution on behalf of council here. It's Resolution 10118. It's a resolution commending Medina High School Girls Rugby Team for their 2017-2018 championship season, whereas on June 2nd, 2018, the Medina High School Girls Rugby Team celebrated a 62-to-14 victory over Amherst in a Division II State Championships at Fortress Obets in Columbus, Ohio. And whereas this is only the third year of the program and two seniors have received scholarships to play in college, the first in history of the women's rugby program. And whereas Medina High School's Girls Rugby Team is the first Medina Rugby Team to beat a Division I opponent, Lakewood, and go undefeated, concluding their season with a 9-0-and-1 record. Now therefore, be resolved by the Council of the City of Medina, Ohio, that Medina City Council hereby commends the Medina High School Girls Rugby Team for its outstanding achievement in obtaining a Division II State Championship title, that a signed copy of this resolution shall be presented to the Medina High School Girls Rugby Team in recognition of this accomplishment, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect at their earliest period allowed by law. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Move to approve.
Second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Resolution 101-18 passes six zero.
Congratulations. Congratulations to the coaches, awesome.
So additionally, we have a proclamation from the City of Medina from the mayor's office. And then Mr. Coin and I and the rest of the council will stand behind you there. Mr. Coin and I will stay up here. And then the parents can take whatever pictures they'd like. The City of Medina proclamation, it states, whereas the Medina High School Girls Varsity Rugby Team under Coaches Stephen Miller, Michael Nord, Shalee Front, Frank, sorry, Caleb Johnson, and Michael Todd are to be recognized and honored for their outstanding rugby season. Whereas by its extraordinary efforts and only the third year of the program, this dynamic team has won the Division II State Title by defeating Amherst in Division II Final on June 2nd, 2018, ending their season with a 9-0-1 record. And whereas this year's varsity team members include two seniors, Kennedy Miller and Essie Sanders, both of whom have received scholarships to play rugby in college. Congratulations. Whereas the excellent performance, dedication, and commitment of these young women, along with their coaching staff, have proven to be a source of admiration and inspiration to the residents of our community. Now therefore, I, Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, do hereby honor the 2018 Medina High School Girls Varsity Rugby Team and staff for their outstanding achievements and commend them for their display of sportsmanship and leadership. And it stated July 9th with the city seal affixed here, too.
Hello, everybody. Steve Miller, head coach here. Just wanted to first let you know, this real special group here, they've worked so hard for this. As you know, two years in a row, third-year program. We've been to this game three times now. Two times the runner-up. So to be able to take this next step forward and become champions has just been really, really exciting. So very proud of you all.
I guess, you know, the one thing I'd say real quick about all of them is a lot of people don't appreciate or realize how much work these ladies had to put in. Back in February, when it was 20 degrees out and it was snowing on them, their hands were freezing, they're passing the ball, they're tackling each other, they're playing late at night. They did that all the way through in February, March, April, May, when it got hot and they were sweaty and nasty. They were still out there fighting and scrapping and, you know, just the heart that each and every one of them showed is really evident in what the results were. But more importantly, they showed what kind of leaders and people they are. And so I am really honored, and I know all those coaches, and if Coach Newark and Coach Frank and Coach Johnson were here, they would feel the same way. Just honored to have watched them play because they're the ones that did it. They're the ones that did it on the field, practiced, worked hard. And so it's all of their heart and effort that did it. And they're going to be the future leaders that are going to be sitting up there one day, that are going to be in charge of this city, this county. So I love you ladies and thank you.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Edwards. I'm gonna be starting my senior year this year. I just completed my third season, all three seasons with this team. And it was really awesome to see the team work from the ground up and a bunch of rookies come and work hard. And I as well started here as a rookie and come together to grow and turn into an awesome team that can be state champions. So that was really awesome to see and be a part of.
Hi, I'm Ella Rasper. I'm also going to be an incoming senior this year. I'm a third-year member and I just want to thank all the coaches on behalf of the team for all the hard work and time they spent away from their families this year. And all three years they've been a part of this team.
Again, congratulations. You're welcome to stay, but I know you all want to leave, so.
Congratulations.
It is great stuff here, but.
Thank you. Say you need to stay and train for this position here. Future leaders.
I guess our jobs are safe for now.
Hey, for now.
And the people that are left are Eric's family, right? They're the family up there.
And they're leaving.
And they're leaving, too.
Well, we have the diehards left, I guess.
Even Eric's family's leaving.
Thank you.
Bye.
I guess we just have to give our proclamations to get people to come.
Yeah. Jonathan, thank you for bringing your family.
Okay, we have ordinance 10218, or amending the job creation grant payment of $22,500 to Sandridge Food Corporation.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mrs. Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. President. This job creation grant payment request is a result from a 2013 expansion project where the Sandridge Food Corporation invested 13 million in facility improvements, creating 100 new jobs and 3.6 million in payroll. The Business Development Committee met with the company and reviewed the project and progress on June 6th. The company has exceeded both the payroll and job creation goals, which qualifies them for this grant payment. Information has been verified with Rita and we respectfully request council to approve this grant payment. As a reminder to council and the public, funding for these grants come from non-income tax-generated revenues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 102-18 passes six zero.
Ordinance 103-18, ordinance authorizing a job creation grant agreement for Kraft Works Engineering LLC.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mrs. Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is for the mayor to enter into a job creation grant agreement with Kraft Works Engineering LLC for the purpose of establishing a new business at 935 Heritage Drive, creating 45 new full-time positions and payroll of $3,010 to the City of Medina by the year of 2021. The agreement will provide the company with a grant of 40% of new payroll taxes to the City of Medina for a term of six years. The Business Development Committee met on May 16th and have recommended the project and application for approval. The law director has also reviewed and approved the agreement. We respectfully request council's approval of the job creation grant agreement. And again, these grants are funded from non-income tax-generated revenues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is any other discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Ordinance 103-18 passes six zero.
Ordinance 104-18, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Medina, Cacosing Materials, Inc., Osborne Medina, and 1,000 Lake Holdings, LLC relative to the maintenance, repair, and operation of the Medina Rail Line.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. The City of Medina in 2006 first entered into a memorandum of understanding with our partners. About two years ago, one of those partners left this city. This new memorandum of understanding will welcome a new partner to us, Spray Products, in addition to Cacosing Materials and Osborne. This agreement allows us to run, maintain, and manage the rail line. We're asking for the emergency clause because Spray Products would like to start receiving shipments, rail shipments, later this month.
Any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 104-18 passes six zero.
Resolution 105-18, a resolution adopting a tax budget of the City of Medina, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019, and submitting the same to Medina County Auditor.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mentioned this in the opening. This is per the state's budgetary laws. This is the first step of our budget. Of course, as you know, we've already started on our budget and done most of it, but this is the state's process.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Resolution 105-18 passes six zero.
Ordinance 106-18, an ordinance to approve, adopt, and enact current replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. This is just a yearly update of our codified ordinances and we have to, the ones we've approved throughout the year have to be put in and codified in our book. So this is the process, how that's accomplished. Is there any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes. Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Ordinance 106-18 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 107-18, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an user license agreement with Zirker Technologies pertaining to the management system suite, CAD RMS, for the police department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our CAD RMS System Computer-Aided Dispatch Records Management System. We'd like to upgrade from Emergitech, which is a end-of-development system, and we're essentially being forced to upgrade to the Zirker platform. That's the platform we've chosen. We've taken approximately a year and a half in this process to evaluate the different vendors, and that's the vendor we settled on. It gives us everything that we're looking for. We are requesting the emergency clause for this. The discounts that are involved with this Zirker system are time-sensitive.
Thank you. Any further discussion on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kaby?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Parnell Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 107-18 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 108-18, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2018 pavement marking program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This is a project working with the street department, which will basically outsource our pavement marking program for 2018. Pavement marking includes center lines, stop bars, crosswalks, that sort of thing, in various areas of the city.
Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 108-18 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 109-18, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2018 Concrete Pavement General Services Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This is a program we do annually. This basically puts a concrete contractor on retainer. We do intend on using this contractor for our sidewalk program. We did that last year. It worked out very well. In addition to that, they are available through the year for things like water break repairs, that sort of thing, when we need a spot repair with concrete pavement or sidewalk.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 109-18 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 110-18, an ordinance amending ordinance number 72-18, passed April 23rd, 2018, authorizing expenditure to solid ground construction for the private home rehabilitation at 3439 Grafton Road, Brunswick, as part of the fiscal year 2016 CHIP Grant Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Sorry about that. Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance? Mrs. Marshall? Or is it Mr. Mendel? I didn't see the mic by you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to amend the previously approved purchase order for this project in, for a property in Brunswick under our current CHIP program. The original purchase order was $40,000. This would increase it to 42-3. The emergency clause is being requested to allow for prompt payment for the work that was done to allow for potential rebidding, bidding on other CHIP program projects by this small pool of contractors that bid on these. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance 110-18 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 111-18, an ordinance enacting new chapter 909, Use of Public Ways for Small Cell Tower, Cell Wireless Facilities, and Wireless Support Structures on Streets, Utilities, and Public Services Code.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on emergency clause and the ordinance? Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance and the next ordinance give to the City of Medina some additional ability to regulate the design and placement of small cell towers that will be coming to this city and other cities in the state of Ohio. New legislation from the state allows some limited ability to regulate what is put into the city right away. These two ordinances help us with that. The emergency clause has been requested because we need to have this legislation in place by July 31st of this year.
Thank you. Mr. Shields?
Mr. Coyne, I'd like to modify my motion there to include there's two changes that we had asked the law director to change in this legislation, subject to his final approval.
My second includes those updates?
Yeah, those updates, I had to deal with both the prohibition of any kind of cell tower facilities being located in a square of the City of Medina, because we believe it's very important to maintain the character of our square. And the second modification dealt with if there's a violation in any one location for three times, that the city engineer has the right to revoke, or it's automatically revoke their permit so they can't have the facility located there anymore. We think that this helps give us an enforcement edge if there's repeat violations. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the amendment?
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kaby?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
And finally, will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance as amended?
Parnell Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 111-18 passes 6-0 as amended.
Ordinance 112-18, an ordinance enacting a new chapter 911, Small Cell Design Guidelines of Streets, Utilities, and Public Services Code.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on emergency clause and ordinance, as Mr. Huber mentioned, these go in tandem, and they need to be adopted at the same time and become enforceable by the end of July. That's when a new law comes into effect. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 112-18 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 113-18, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the Wellness Services Agreement between the City of Medina, Ohio, and Medina Hospital.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance? Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is to authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to the ordinance 56-16, which is our wellness service agreement with the Medina Hospital. This adds three more years to our partnership we've had in place since 2010, and helps support our healthy Medina initiatives. I want to thank the hospital for their continued support and partnerships we share with them. The reason for the emergency clause is that this took a little time to agree on the exact wording of the amendment, and will start July 1st, or retroback July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coyne?[1339.28]